Evening, um, understand the mayor is not with us tonight and so uh hopefully he's feeling better soon. And I appreciate Councilmember Morissette, um, we'll run through you all received an informational memorandum. And um that provided some background history and other options, um, some data. We'll cover most of what's in the memorandum in a presentation here, um, that's been put together by staff. Um, so um, appreciate the time tonight to to talk about special events. So we'll start with the last first, so so the goal of tonight. Is if the council is prepared to do so for them to provide staff with policy direction. Um, and policy direction, we'll we'll have a framework for that where you can kind of talk to us a little bit about. Um, where you might want to go with some of these and how you would differentiate them. And if you want us to go work on something and come back, if you like things the way they are or um or not. And so um, kind of this won't be your last time to speak, but we'll take the input we get. Policy direction and then we'll try to put together something that resembles an update to our um existing practice, if nothing else. Um, potentially update to the to a policy. We're gonna go through the background and try to understand um what staff sees as some of the challenges. Um, and recognize some, uh, see if there's a recognition for some need for update. Understanding that this isn't the workshop where we've invited all the special event. You know, everybody's had a block party or the chamber or other people to speak. So it's primarily from perspective of staff to kind of see where council wants to go. Proposed policy framework, we've given you some framework that's used by a lot of other cities and we think is adaptable to to River Falls. Um, with with more input, um, we'll talk a little bit about. Some of our best guesses or estimates on the expenses, we've got better numbers on some of the revenues um through the room taxes we can talk about. Um, we'll explore if there's interest in doing cost recovery, if it's intended to be a token. If it's something that you have a strong feeling about as a council about a percentage or some measurement of what we're doing for cost recovery. And then finally, we'll try to kind of synthesize that into something that would help us understand for policy direction. That would give us kind of if there's next steps or things that you want us to take on your behalf. Or if you want to send it off to us to kind of keep working um at a staff level. Though the hope is that whatever we do, we can at least have some clarity in in roles and responsibilities. Um, maybe improve coordination and some transparency about how we do this. And that'll be a question for the council about if you wanna, you know, what kind of fairness tests you want to do about how we're treating different types of events. And different groups that are organizing those events. So why are we spending any time talking about special events? We think we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about the costs and the resources and the other things, but we want to start it out the presentation. That we, I feel strongly professionally, and I think the council, we've heard um you all talk to us about it. That there is an importance of having special special events, um, it's part of the identity. It helps bring the community together, which is one of the primary roles of a community is to provide. Uh, a social and commercial network for people to get together. Um, it promotes that economic um local economy, at least there's a lot of good arguments that it does. Um, and then also it's experience based, so this is something that when you build events and and things in the community for visitors. A lot of times that has impacts on your residents and vice versa, so. Um, they matter because of those things, they bring the community together, build local pride and identity, attract visitors. They help you kind of show off the city, um, they support that civic engagement and fun. And and it also can boost that local culture and connections, um, because some of these groups are, uh, some of these. Um, special events are specifically to do that. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the Chamber of Commerce role because they are our tourism bureau under the um designation. And certainly they are known for kind of the, what a lot of people think about the major events. Um, River Falls Days, Bacon Bash, River Dazzle. Um, and we didn't include things like the UWR for rodeo, we didn't include UWF commencement. Or the River Falls High School graduation, even though those are special events, they're big and they might have all of those things. Um, they tend to be uh specific location related and tend to be on those institutional or or non-city public. Um, property. Um, we have lots of community partners, including those we just talked about with UWF, the school district, the downtown business leaders, our neighbor's place, American Legion. There's, there's a number, including private businesses that host some events that would be public in nature. And we, we tend to have events most of the year, so we don't just have like a three-month event schedule um in the summer. We've got events most of the year throughout the year. So just a little background and context, again, why are we here? And in two thousand six, the city council adopted a policy to guide the use of staff time, equipment and money for special events. Um, so that's that city assistance and resource policy that I'm sure you all have memorized. Um, but so in two thousand six, there was a point in time where the city council at times said, hey, there's a lot of stuff going on. We'd kind of like to have a little bit more, um. We'd like to have a little bit more understanding of what's going on and have a little more influence in how this is gonna work. And at the time, they, the stated goals were to reduce unplanned costs by the city and to avoid over overloading city staff. Um, and it appears that before twenty, uh, we don't think obviously two thousand six was the beginning of time. Um, but before that, it it appears that it was informal and inconsistent in how everything was treated. So we don't have a lot of good information or data to provide you pre-two thousand six. Two thousand six is when that first policy went in, so that you started to see re- resolutions and things going to the council. And then in twenty eighteen, um, staff created a special event application. That's a practice more than a policy, so it was a practice of trying to coordinate these things amongst different staff departments. That was managed primarily by the police department and that helped kind of streamline the request. But there still was kind of some, there's a lot of talk about whether that's inconsistent. If all the decisions are consistent with different groups, different types of events. Um, it was kind of an informal attempt to get a little more formalization on the process, if that makes any sense. Um, and then in twenty twenty-five, staff has created a special events review committee. So again, this is all kind of internal workings of the city, there isn't been policy changes by the council. We're still working off that two thousand six policy and actions that you've taken in council meetings or direction you provided us about how you want. Things to be treated, but now that's kind of a multi-departmental uh group to improve coordination across, so we're kind of communicating it better. Um, and then they have kind of come up with a goal of trying to get some clear formal process. And an updated application that's at least endorsed by the council, if not uh a formal policy accepted. Um, so I want to be clear again, we're using words like proposed policy framework. This is a proposed or could be a proposed policy framework. We still haven't had the discussion, I hope to tonight, to find out if the council has appetite or if they're like, we like it laissez-faire, we want it informal, we don't. We don't want to go down like an application checklist and formula and fee schedule and all the things that would 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 make a more. Um, formal policy framework, but we suggest you think about the following, um, whether you like it or not. Whether you, y- you want to do more formalization or not, this would be some things that you might guide your decisions about. And things that would help us provide a better result as far as processing through this, through the staff. So kind of helping understand what the scope is of what the city's doing versus the person doing the event. And also understanding kind of what what's going on um in the community. And again, we've kind of cut some things out that we didn't plan to talk about a lot tonight unless the council wants to. Those events we talked about that are really big and impactful, but not necessarily part of our our framework. Um, and we would, so we'd focus on the city property stuff and not the routine, like I want to rent the open picnic shelter. You know, for a birthday party or something like that. Um, we'd like to get something that's standardized so that everybody can kind of see the same thing and understand what they're doing. It puts some expectations out to people that are doing special events about how long it takes to get coordinated and organized internally. That giving us an application for open container and closing streets seven to ten days before the event. Doesn't likely result in it getting scheduled properly noticed onto a city council meeting. Um, for action, let alone kind of review of their insurance and other things. Uh, we want to talk a little bit about fee and cost recovery and what that means to all of you. How much do we think it costs within reason and is that important for council to track, for us to track by council? Um, or if we want to just kind of do that in kind as as part of what the city's fabric is. Um, insurance rules about things that we think might be dangerous. Um, or have the most, most likelihood of being dangerous. If there's enforcement or other things that you want to do for violations or not, not kind of playing along with us. If people want to just do their own thing, are you okay with that? Or do we want to have some teeth that you really have to coordinate with us to do this? Um, and then one of the things that we saw in a lot of the policy frameworks was just cancellation, like if big changes occur in the city. Just because you give intended of improvement ninety days ago, doesn't mean no matter what, we're going totally ruthless event. Um, and and that kind of relieves some of the liability for people suing us and saying, well, you. You said you were gonna close the street, you said you were gonna do this. Um, now we spent all this money and you owe us, in other words, if the city's gonna allow things, it's it's not at our risk. We want it to be at the the organizer's risk. So then we thought it was helpful to just think of things like not all events are created equal, so there's in the memo. And also here, you've kind of got different levels of significance, different levels of resources. Um, and obviously you can make some good arguments that. Different council members might have different feelings about whether we, why are we involved at all in uh zero through three? Some of you might say, well, I don't think we let staff handle everything below four or whatever. So there, that's where some of the policy direction can come is if you start to think about like. What's important to you, given all the things the city's working on, that you want either staff and or council to be involved in. Or you may feel strongly that anytime a street is closed, anytime there's staff. Um, effort being put into these events that you want some kind of adoption by council or some some kind of acknowledgement. I I haven't heard that as a, as a direction you want us to go, but I I understand that that's a possible. In the whole scope of policy range, that would be a possibility. I'm, I'm least comfortable with the expense part because we haven't put a lot of effort historically into trying to track. Um, and we've done that primarily not because we just didn't want to, because we didn't think it would be worth the expense to track the expense. Given, given that this is a, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollar direct impact. Um, certainly there's lots of indirect expenses that we could start tracking too, like. How many meetings did Amy have, the city clerk, how many meetings did, was the city administrator involved in? Though that time isn't getting tracked against these events or or charged out, so there's costs beyond what we're tracking. So I I just want you to take that, these with a grain of salt. Um, and we're basically only charging the, what we consider the large primarily chamber events. For for costs. Um, so it's about, this is Public Works, um, Police Department. You know, it's nominal with the exception of River Falls Days where we're actually staffing up. Um, the reserve officer cost is just the direct cost, which you can see we're getting a pretty. That's not, but that's not tracking that, you know, we had to put extra gas in a car, be unmarked car. Cause a reserve officer has it at the corner, it's just their direct time on a, you know, a W, W two. Um, and then some of that time for police could be um the deputy chief doing meetings in the community. With the chamber and others that aren't necessarily tracked directly, um, although they try to track some of that stuff. But I don't believe they tracked any of the chief's time ever into any of these events, it's just considered part of his overall. So grain of salt there that you've got, you know, twenty thousand there and forty-five thousands or sixty-five thousand. In expenses, we're pretty comfortable we're spending every year, and then if you didn't have these events, we wouldn't have those expenses. Um, and so that gets you into the, into kind of this model of. You can do all kinds of stuff that the. I had talked to one of the council members in one-on-ones a little bit about it, I mean, some communities have these grant programs where they kind of hold the money. They know they're gonna spend it on stuff, so then they have a process where they're saying, well, we'll give ten thousand to this event and ten thousand. And that ten thousand might end up being charged back, you know, Public Works invoice to the event. But then the council gets to say, hey, we're, you know, we supported this event as a sponsor or whatever, so you can do it a number of different ways. We haven't got too caught up in that. Um, and we also haven't really done a lot of full cost expensing or recovery. Um, if we heard from council that that's important to you, we certainly have the ability to do that. And. I'd say this whole I waiver thing we used to do all the time informally. And so that brought in a question of fairness and equity and like who gets to make that decision, should that be the city administrator? Should it be the police chief deciding that that's doesn't warrant it, should it be? Um, the Public Works Director saying, well, that event is not, you know, we always do the bike race, so it's no big deal, we'll just do it. Um, we, as you know, we have a fee schedule and we've started to try to be more consistent on some of that with with a fair amount of pushback. Um, like why are we getting charged two hundred and forty dollars for three picnic tables? Um. Think most of that subsided because people see a pretty, there's a tangible benefit to the things that are being dropped off or used. Um, but that's, that's up to the council ultimately, and then we don't currently. Kind of directly allocate our room tax portion to these events. I think it's psychologically, I've heard council people in the past say, well, we're getting, you know, we've got fifty thousand in room tax and. We're subsidizing or investing depending how you look into this amount, ten thousand, twenty, thirty, five, forty into these events. Should we bother thinking about the ledger and trying to figure it out, you can if you want to. Um, so we'll come back to that when we talk about policy questions. Um, so this is just. A ten-year snapshot of room tax. Um, so we keep a portion as allowed by law and then the rest of it goes to the chamber. When we say chamber, we, we're talking about the entity, the chamber, which is also the tourism entity under the twenty fifteen law for room tax. So we're giving them that money and then they're responsible for using that money in accordance with with. All the rules around the promotion and and what's called heads and beds type um activity. So we, the city portion under the law can just go right in the general fund. So if you, if the council wanted to, that's not what we do now, right now we put it into an economic and business um development fund. And kind of track it, but you could each year just take that money and and as long as the chamber is meeting. The minimum thresholds for that heads and beds stuff, the city money could just offset general fund expenses. Um, that's a really basic overview of room tax, there's more nuance to it, but for the most part. What you see in twenty-four for for room tax at fifty-six thousand can can primarily just go to whatever things we think. And we, meaning the council, thinks makes sense. So, I'm gonna check my slide and see what, yeah, so this is the, I powered through all those other slides. This is the slide that we want to spend some time on. Um. And I'm not sure if you can read that well or not. Um. So. The, the types of conversations that we'd like to hear the council having is. Do you all have a sense of the same kind of differentiation of events? Do you all feel that events are, you can easily categorize them? Um. Do. Do the things that we're doing seem right-sized, meaning are you, one of the things the council has policy direction over is. Do you think we're doing too much street closing for not enough events, right? So are you thinking, hey, it's a really convenience to the public to close all these streets on a Saturday, Sunday, whatever? That doesn't match the benefit you think you're getting from the event. Um, and then, um, or you could also decide that you think the safety is not secure. Like you're worried about these events because they seem overwhelming to our public safety. At this time, we're not, staff isn't recommending that that's the case or warning you on that. Um, the one about road closures is really only something your council can make a decision about. Because it's, y- you know, it's, do you feel that the community is. Um, inconvenience more than the the benefit of bringing the community together, a different part of the community together um for the event. Um, and then. What level of city involvement is appropriate for for each of those kind of event types? Is there levels where you don't want us to be involved at all? Um. You know, are you okay with people, and this is an extreme example, with two neighbors parking their cars at the end of each street and blocking it off for a block party? Um, or do you want to have some level of control there where they at least have to put a permit or something in? Um, and notify staff and we bring out a couple barricades. That's, that's a big mouthful there, then you start to get into like. If you can understand and differentiate alike, if you all kind of have a general sense of where you want to differentiate. Um. Either, do we have special, uh, is there, we have special children, are there certain things that are just so special to you as a council and to the community? In your role as a, as a community decision maker, that we do things different for them. Those events are just worth the extra differentiation all by themselves. Um. So. And then, like I said, you could create a grant program if you want to put your name on, if you want to be involved more than you are already. Um, and then that last thing is the big cost recovery, so if you get through the first two and you decide that you kind of worked through that. Um, then I'd say you kind of get to the point of, alright. No matter how we slice this, I don't think you're gonna come up with. I don't think the events are costing us as a city more than a quarter of a million dollars. So even if you. Triple the, the direct cost, um, and Alex, and said, well, I want to know every moment of Scott's time and Amy's time and the police chief's time. I think you'd be hard to get to a half a million dollars, you probably wouldn't be that hard to get to um a quarter of a million. And so you all have to tell us if it's worth, you know, is, is that level of expense in the city? How much effort do you want to put into it, either as a council or staff? So I, I appreciate that this isn't the normal workshop where we've kind of got option A or B. Or in the case of the fiscal planning, we've kind of laid it all out, balanced it out and said you can add and subtract. This is a little bit more, um, there's a lot more gray area here, so. So Councilmember Morissette, I'd, I'd leave it up to you and the council to try to.
Sure.
To corral your thoughts and decide where you want to go first, and then we would like to listen and answer questions as you have them. But I think we imagine that a lot of this would be discussion amongst the council that we would kind of pay attention to.
So we should probably have discussion, well, we shouldn't probably, we will have discussion and see where everybody's at. Uh, we have a hard stop at about six-ten uh to kind of clean up. And then we gotta be back here at six-fifteen for order review, so who wants to go? Mister Beirstein.
Scott, if you could go back to the slide we were showing the proposed outline of how this could all work, I can't remember which one it was, there we go. I think that's the policy framework, do you have some sense for what, let's pretend we just pick that. Some sense for what that costs staff versus what we're spending now in terms of time and money? In other words, this looks to me like quite a bit more work for staff than what we're doing now.
I, I don't think our intent was to generate more cost, I think you could argue that it might. Um, but we, I don't, we haven't done an analysis that I could give you a good answer on that, but I would tell you, I'm not defaulting to. A more proposed policy framework is definitely more expensive for staff because it may be that our. That a more laissez-faire still ends up with all kinds of coordination issues, right? It's like somebody calls on a Friday and is like, why is this closed and how come this person has decided that they're using all of Heritage Park? Where if you have a more, even though I'm not a huge, I don't, you know, I like to have as loose as possible for innovation. That can cost you more money because you, you don't have a framework, and then it also can add to confusion, which adds cost too, so. Um, I think. I think you should look at it more as a policy direction from council than a cost issue.
Well, and maybe I'm not saying it right, I'm worried about staff time to pull all this off, but you're saying, if I'm hearing you, that. There really probably isn't that much difference between doing it this way and doing it the way we've been doing it.
Yeah, I think the only way that makes a true difference is if we, if we do a lot more review. Like if we add a whole bunch more requirements, or. You can make it a lot less expensive is, as in the key, an example would be business licensing. We don't have it for the most part. So when people call and say, what do I need to open a whatever shop in River Falls? There's not too many of them that you need anything, if you're gonna sell liquor, tobacco, second-hand store. Um. Food, we'd send them to the county, so then it's not much work for city staff to just say, we're done with that one. I don't, I haven't heard from council that that's what your approach you'd like to take. Um, where it's like, do what you want, leave us alone, we're not gonna close any streets, we're not gonna do any open containers. Just have your events in your own spaces and leave us alone. Um, that would save a lot of time. We're probably stuck putting resources in one way or the other, unless you prohibit us from doing so, which you can.
Who's next?
Go ahead.
Um. It'd be in the application to fill out for events, but something that, that um, I'm always interested in is. Who's the audience and what's the number in the audience, so I know that's a lot of work and that wouldn't be necessarily something the staff would have. But I would think if a chamber event is going to list something, they'd say, yeah. You know, there's probably two thousand people from out of town that come in or, and in our, our audience is families or. Um, like um, bluegrass, it isn't families, but it's adults, so who's the audience and what's the numbers? I'd like to, I'd like to know that in some fashion, I know there's not a firm fixed number on it. But it'd be kind of neat to um know what the idea is, that what they're driving for.
You mean as part of the application process?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great idea, I mean, they might not know, but they could at least, they've, they've got a better idea than we do.
Well, they're targeting somebody.
They are.
So.
They should be.
Whether they get the audience or not, it's a different story, but they're targeting somebody.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think this is a great, great issue for us to address as a city. Because so far it hasn't been so expensive for us, you know, we've been recouping costs from the room tax, at least partially covering it. Even though it hasn't been designated in that direction, um, you know, to be in a community where events are growing and revenues from events are growing. And, and community impact from events are growing, I think that having some sort of standardized application process. Would be valuable in order to present to everyone in the community that we are open to events and that we appreciate different organizations. Like the downtown business leaders bringing events to town just on their own, you know, they've been doing a lot in that respect, other organizations as well. So when you, when you take and standardize that application process, it really uh helps create fairness in the process. And opening up the entire community to these groups and organizations that, that want to be, you know, having events. But as we continue to grow and as we have more events, I think that, you know, the costs are going to continue to increase. And so recouping them in some way is probably smart to have at least a plan in place, so yes, we're gonna charge for our services. Um, I mean, they're moderately substantial, they're only gonna grow.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Um, I'm personally okay. Um, I'm personally okay with subsidizing these for like all those civic um. Engagement and quality of life and things that you mentioned. Um, I have no, uh. I, I, I think that it's, it, I mean, people. The perception is you get what you pay for, so having some skin in the game from, um, you know, uh. Uh, the people who have the event. Um, I'm not opposed to that either, but um, you know, I'm not worried about, um. Re- reimbursing us for absolutely every single cost. That seems like nickel and diming it when, um, you know, essentially this, having events is. You know, is kind of um part of our job as a city. To have a place, you know, to help develop a place where people wanna have events. Uh, I think, I think it's a great idea to have um a standardized application form because then, you know, you can just save those. You've got a record as to, you know. What kind of events we have that's, you know, easy to, easy to look back at. But we don't have the pre two thousand six.
I guess we're going down the line. Okay, so. I like the idea of the standard application in terms of being able to track. Uh, estimated impact in demographics targeted. I think that's helpful long term. Also, I think it's helpful for those organizations. On occasions, I have said here like, well. Was this successful, right? And people, they don't really know, but they're gonna come back and do it next year because they did it the year before. So I think it's good of us to help that just be a best practice for organizations. Um, I do think we should probably carve out something for nonprofits. Um, I know Scott referenced some of the pushback on occasion that's, that's popped up for the three tables, two hundred and forty dollar scenario. But I think it's okay for us to, as a value statement, say. We value what nonprofits are trying to do in combating certain issues and challenges in our community and because of that, we're just, we're gonna build that in. And as long as we're fair in the application process of doing it, then we're laying that standard for the future.
Yeah, I mean, for me, um, the staff time is the big question mark, right? And having a standard application fee actually helps um subsidize that, so it actually balances out uh better than it has been. I guess when you look at it too, there's opportunities for um community grants that might meet our comprehensive plan. If it lines up with a strategic plan that we've actually identified as a city. So there is potential in actually promoting certain things if it falls under a specific criteria that. The committee in this would be able to identify across the board. So, but yeah, for me though, I mean, the staff time, I think is something that we have to take a look at. And how, what that means in different parts for different um. Applications, because the common ones are actually gonna be the thing that um would actually be the cost that we're really discussing than. The bigger ones because they're, they happen all the time. So I like the fact there's a fee on that. But I do think there's room for actually having community grants for initiatives that are, are identified in our comprehensive plan. And dovetail with the strategic plan. So, that's my thoughts.
I think, well, I think I heard you say two, our class are about two hundred and fifty thousand, you're saying?
I, I'm saying if you were asking me what I thought, if we kinda tried to wring everything out and. Put overhead and time and. You know, vehicles and equipment and all that, we're probably gonna get to two hundred and fifty thousand without too much effort. I mean, this is not nothing. But saying that we're right now, kind of as the council member Paige has indicated, we're. We're in this teenager phase that we've, we're in a lot of things in this community where. Things are happening pretty much and we're getting a lot more events. It's still manageable. But if we had a request to do a major event, like every summer weekend, I mean, we don't have the staff. To do that and River Falls Days is the, the example of really intensive resource allocation. I mean, we're. We have not chosen as staff when we're dealing with the chamber to say no a lot. So. But like putting up the snow fence at Heritage Park, we could say, just find a fence company. And go put it up. And here's our requirements for how you should put the fence up and where you should put the fence up. We still have tents here that are owned by the city that we use for city events that we also use for River Falls Days. We could say. You guys go get your own, you're getting the tents already in Heritage Park. I'm just giving you some examples, but. We don't do that a lot. I mean. I, we believe that you've told us either informally or formally. Um, and, and remember in the chamber thing, it's list, we're listing all that out in the resolution. To the extent we can, it says. We're gonna move stuff from cold storage to here. We're gonna set this up. We're gonna have public works, guys. We're gonna do this, that. Over time, there's things that we've said and we just don't wanna do that anymore, right? Like. You need to find a garbage service because we don't wanna send our guys around to do the garbage, um.
Well, Scott, so it.
No, no, I was just gonna say to Diane's point then, if you take two fifty to buy sixteen thousand residents, that's fifteen dollars a year we're spending.
That's.
I mean.
I, I was just sitting here thinking, you know, if you wanted to do like a. Gay River Falls ad- advertising campaign, make people feel good about the city. It's like, it's been a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah. Real quick. Is there? Is there some? Agreement by the council that our assumptions about River Falls Days is true? Like that's. That's an event you think needs to be pulled off and?
Well, and so what I was just gonna say is, if we're talking about not charging nonprofits and we're talking about partnering with the chamber and not charging them, I mean, the. The dollars that you have in here are all in reference to chamber events, right? I mean, sixty five thousand dollars of chamber events right there that you're saying, well, we're just gonna partner with the chamber and not charge them and we're not gonna charge nonprofits. Who's left that's having events in our community? That we potentially would charge?
Well, I think under that framework, what's, what's? Contemplated. Is that there's a category of events that are private in nature, that they're intended to promote a specific business or a specific group of businesses. And that's art and science, right? So it's like, you could figure that out based on how much of the revenue from the event is going to a single. Person or entity. But, so I, you'd, we'd have to have some challenges over time. You council would say, well, nonprofit, this is, we're gonna do this. Chamber, we're gonna do this and then there's. Some kind of gray area in the middle where it's like.
Gray and fuzzy.
Yeah, you know, if, if it's, if we think the event looks like it's a Paige Dental new patient recruiting event. And, and it's hard, and it's hard to justify the public purpose. Then is there a mechanism? For it to come back to the council and then you get to determine that, right? You can say, the staff can say, uh. Doctor Page, this one doesn't look exactly like what we're anticipating. If you want, you can go to the council and ask if they'll close the street and do this and that for your. Event, um, and we might still do that. It just probably would be at a fee, right? So. If you're gonna sell, you know, if your business is celebrating fiftieth anniversary. And you're not directly on Main Street, we may be able to justify a four hour, six hour street closure. To, to have some cake or some celebration, right? But. We've also said, we have said no, there's examples of us saying no to street closures and things because again, we're, we're going, we're looking at that going. In the vacuum, without council's direct um. Thoughts on this, staff alone think this is probably more than what we wanna put in, so.
Well, so I just wonder if it circles back around to, you know, the sponsorships of, you know, the River Fall, the city of River Falls is partnering with the chamber on this event. Or um recouping costs through the room tax and looking at where that money goes or what our percentage cut is, like if you're looking at cost recruitment.
Yeah, I, I got a couple comments and they're sort of random, so just hang with me here, but. I don't think it's bad that the city gets recognized for stuff. I know that. Uh, and I don't wanna pick on them, but I know when a, a certain organization brought a comedian to town. We asked them, are we getting recognition? And we weren't at that point, I don't think. So I don't think it's bad for us to keep track of this. And in some way work that into either the state of the city address and say, here's what we donated, here's, here's the services that we gave back to our residents. Uh, in some dollar amount and maybe ours, but I don't wanna spend a dime to. You know, to save a dollar type of thing. So city recognition, I think, is important. Um, when you get to the chart with the different levels. My thought is, I like that classification in an application process. I think zero, one and two at a minimum could be handled by. Some combination of the city clerk and the chief of police or their designates. So it doesn't have to be a. You know, it might be a quick application process. Somebody comes in, wants to do National Night Out and get a couple barriers. Fine, we just wanna know where it is for a couple reasons. Here's the barriers, you know, they drop them off and I don't know that we need to, to charge or be aggressive with those. I think the bottom. Three would be ones that I would be more interested in seeing. A higher level of scrutiny towards, do they need, you know, does the farmer's market need to be? Scrutinized? Not really. I mean, unless they close Maple Street on a Saturday morning and. You know, throw their zucchini and tomatoes.
And this, this is, would be an example of a farmer's market, so not, not probably the current farmer's market, but. A farmer's market that wants to close Main Street or Maple Street or Elm Street for three. Three days a week or for three hours, so not. I, just to be clear, clear, farmer's market in the Dix parking lot or the Patax parking lot. That seems up to Patax, um, and, and the farmer's market, but. We've had other requests to do. A flea market or a baza- I don't know what they've called them before, bazars or whatever where it's like, hey, can't we just? Close the Maple Street Bridge like you do for River Falls Days just for, you know, a Saturday? We, we had businesses, existing businesses ask us that directly, like. Can't I just extend my? Sales floor on Saturday? For, you know, my own. Tag sale or whatever, and so that's would be that example.
I believe that needs more scrutiny from. At some level, whether it comes to the council or not, I guess I'd see whatever else thinks. I think any open container requirement reserves, police reserves. I think that's a must. I think that's what's happening anyway, but. So I'm going record about it. When we talk about expenses, I'm, I'm not in favor personally of. Looking for every dime and trying to figure out every, every penny and everything else. I think the conversation up to this point and the memo and Scott and I talked about this this morning, but. It's only been the expense side. There is a revenue. Decision that we could make if we really wanted to try to cover more of these. By, by statute, I think you can go to eight percent in Wisconsin. I'm not advocating we go to eight percent. We're currently at six for room tax. Um, Prescott's at six, Hudson's at three, if I looked at it correctly, but there is a lever there if we wanted to recapture. A little more ex- of that expense through revenue, we could pull the. Pull the room tax lever. It's a half percent, it's one percent. Maybe we, maybe there's no appetite to do it. I don't know, but I'm just pointing out that there's. You know, being in banking, there's two sides of that equation. So that's, that's my, that's my bigger question there. I'm not looking to make. I, I think I've heard from everybody else too, I think an application is a good idea. Uh, I think formalizing it somehow is a good idea. And, and putting it together. I am not interested in. Trying to figure out how to, how to nickel and dime everybody. But I do think we need to start putting a little bit of parameter around and maybe the first. Maybe if we do wanna put some loose fees in there that are hard and fast barricades. Picnic tables. Uh, police reserves, maybe we start with a.
We have a list.
We do, we have a list, but maybe we start with. Hey, you're gonna start your event with a. Five thousand dollar credit. If you go over that, then we're gonna have you pay a little bit. So maybe, maybe every event gets a five thousand dollar. Credit first. And then if they go over it, they make the decision to go to the menu and pick the à la carte items they want. And I don't know that five thousand's right. I'm just using that as an example, but. Those are some of my thoughts. I just think we're seeing more and more of it. Um, I think it's important for us to. When's the best time to do something? When you don't have a real big problem and I think that's where we're at. Because if we get to a big problem. And all of a sudden, we're gonna charge somebody. And they go, well, wait a minute. This is new. I think that. That's a, that's a much more difficult position.
Can I, can I ask council a couple of questions and see if you can help, help align? I think what I'm hearing is there's. You're not sure where all the lines are to draw, but it, it does sound like the council, there's some consensus that there is differentiation amongst events, like. We're not gonna try to treat every event the same and get every penny of expense out of every, so that's, that seems pretty clear to me based on what I've heard anyways. It also sounds like there's. You know, street closures and alcohol are two things that trigger some interest by the council. I didn't hear though that in every single case of a street closure, maybe you're, you need to be involved. If it's a block party and it's a one block thing. You'd be open to just having a process where that can be approved and it doesn't. Every street closure is not something the council has to approve, but. I, I think it's safe to assume if we were gonna close Main Street. The council wants to, that, that's a level of. In, in, informing that should, that should be happening for the council. We don't have any common consumption. Zones yet, um. That seems to be something that's coming our way, talking to colleagues where they can, they kinda grant these open container. Party zones, so we're not there yet. So what I think I'm hearing from the council is. If it's an open, if you're going to serve alcohol outside your private property in your establishment, you think that still should be coming. Through the application process and likely coming to the council.
I would land it, yes. I don't know where it balances.
If it's a block party, I don't know.
Yeah, not a block party.
Not a, not a block party, um, you know, uh.
Cause I mean, you can have a beer in the yard anyway.
Block parties are probably, I don't, I actually have to look at the legal, but I think because. Nobody's charging and there, there's no commerce going on. I, well, I can assure you it's not a high priority enforcement. It's not a priority enforcement. But I actually, I actually don't even know if it would technically be. Illegal. I mean, if the street's closed. You're not drinking. You're drinking in the right away potentially, but I'd have, I'd have to get more information to understand that, but I. But I think what I'm hearing.
I think that, you know, I think that there potentially are um events. Say you have a graduation party in one of our parks. Uh, you have to get an alcohol permit for that, don't you?
You do not.
No, okay. Well, okay, well, I just, I'd see those small event, smaller.
You do? Sorry, you do.
Wow.
I'm wrong. You can correct me right away.
I, I don't, I don't see those as needing to come before the council at all, but if, if it's like, you know, a, a commercial event, you know, the buyers are selling stuff and, and. They want an open container or, you know, for the festivals, they, they want an open container, that's different.
Okay. Well, that's good. I mean, that's not hard to figure out the list of kinda zero through two. Three is kind of a gray, can be a gray area, like what's a three and what, what's a four? And what's a two out of that category, but. Zero ones and twos are not too hard to figure out, um. It sounds like there isn't a lot of heartburn about the current level of effort towards major signature events, those fives. But you wanna have better informa- what I heard. Different questions, but all with the same theme is you'd like a little bit more impact, a little more information on impact. And s- you know, scope and maybe even a little more information on how much resources we're putting into them. So that we can talk about that as part of our, our ethic.
Talking on the, the major ones. Something that I find interesting, maybe it's just being in town for over sixty years, but. I've seen the demise of River Falls Days, right? I saw it as old fashioned barding days and the streets were just packed and. And, and, and then I saw go to River Falls Days with the Kenny Carnival and all that and now it's. It's really dwindled and, but I don't think that's our job. To necessarily judge if the chamber wants to go ahead and do this and they needs, need to put together their. Application, we need to either approve it or disapprove, but, but. I don't think we, we judge them. If they, they wanna take that risk and think it's, they're gonna get X number of people and there's X number of. Dollars of revenues, then, huh? We gotta in a sense take them further word.
Mr. Downey, you're gonna say something?
Um, yeah, Mr. Simpson, um, do we have a direct policy or if, has there been any internal dialogue regarding um, police reserve? For regional events and major signature events? Or is that something that I think might actually be good to look at and what's fair for the future? How, you know?
I think the preference of the police chief and myself is that. Level law enforcement support for events should be at the sole discretion of the police chief. And, and so. For now, we've taken the tact that we don't wanna get too involved in charging people for reserves and things. Because we don't wanna disincentive for them, just tell us what's gonna happen so that we can be prepared for it. It doesn't mean we let them off the hook for private security. In fact, we've been a little bit more assertive, I'd say, and in the last couple of years of saying, hey. We'll take care of the streets and stuff that's gonna be, but you, we need you to have better staffing in your establishment. And there's some teeth to the liquor law with that, so that's, that's good. I don't know if I'm answering your question. I, the council certainly has the policy. Leeway to tell us that you want to set some minimum staffing for events. And or charge for it. I think right now. We're taking the approach that, that that's a general public safety thing that we probably don't need to get too, too caught up. But there, there certainly is, you know, if we were Madison with Halloween. It would, it'd be different scope of problem and, and we may want some of the organizers to, to reimburse us for costs. So I, I think what, where we are at right now with the police um, decisions and, and. We can certainly get the chief to give you specific feedback on that, just not my generalizing. We want them to have really good control of their premise. And that includes the, the people that they're, that are leaving their premise to go out into the open container area. So we just don't want it to be, well, it doesn't matter that, you know, get them out in the street drunk. But for the most part, I think the chief finds that people are qua- the establishments with liquor license are cooperative. And it's, they have a pretty good understanding of where the roles are. Like, this person in the street is something that we'll take care of and be prepared to take care of. This person inside, you need to have the capacity because we don't wanna keep going into the private establishments with reserve officers and police officers. That's where we would, that's where we would start to come back to you probably as council saying. We should think about doing something because we're having to staff extra police, a lot of extra police to go into control establishments. The stuff that spills out on the streets in the normal course of events, I think the chief has indicated to me he's fairly comfortable staffing for that.
Is there a, is there a straightforward understanding about who pays for the reserve police?
Yeah, I mean, we are. I mean, right now, we're taking it on as a public safety responsibility. Uh, I don't know that we have charged, can you think of an instance where we've charged an event for police reserves?
I think if, I think if the scenario that you laid out happens, I think not only. The police reserves become a question, but the whole event becomes a question at that point.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's a, it would not be a surprise that most event organizers about how I just explained when the city would have a concern.
Yeah.
I mean, if. If, if, if the events are so poorly managed by volunteers or paid staff. That there's a lot of interaction in those private spaces. Or for the example of like um, a concert or something going on at Heritage Park. If it's like, we need fifty officers to handle this, then obviously we're gonna have a discussion about it. But um, you've got a really good police force and their, their general thought is, hey, we, you know, we'll, that's what we're here for, we'll figure it out. And right now, we don't have a whole lot of events where we, it's kinda like an all call where you can't take vacation, you can't be gone. River Falls Days is pretty intensive, like we're thoughtful about having all of public works and all of police on fishing trips. During River Falls Days, it's not, it wouldn't be great. We'd have a hard time supporting it.
On that note, um, I would appreciate information, I think, from the chamber on their levels of volunteerism and how many people they bring. Like for the chamber for different events. You know, just what are they bringing to the table as far as man hours and, and work that they're contributing? And I would also wonder about revenues that they're seeing from these events and estimates of local economic impact from these events. You know, cause that could be really persuasive information for the city to, to use to continue this partnership.
Would you say the same for, um, I think they report some of that, maybe not formally back to us?
I was gonna say, I think they report that during their, their annual request, their letter request of, of services provided.
But would you?
Not the revenues.
Yeah, would you feel the same about revenues for the nonprofits, like if we're gonna do? If you're, if up to five thousand or twenty-five hundred or whatever is gonna be waived. And they're making fifty thousand dollars at their event, it'd be nice, it would be nice for us to at least be able to say, hey, we got to share in them raising that money.
Yeah.
It's just more information.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I support that. I, I, the, what the impact that they have. And I don't know that we need to go into depth as far as the Department of Tourism does with the calculation of. How much revenue per, per hotel room rented. I don't think we need to do that, but well, that actually might be the easiest thing to do. Think about it.
But the chamber's probably already tracking.
The chamber's probably tracking that. But you've got the downtown business leaders, you've got Art in the Kenny.
Yeah, most of the event, I don't get the sense from, and I don't interact with the organizers as much as other people in the city.
Yeah.
I get the sense is that if we're clear about what we expect. And they can see a connection with what we're asking them to do with, with whatever purpose we state. In this case, kinda understanding the broader community impact. They're not gonna object to that. And on the other, and, you know, connected to that is we're not trying to create pain and suffering for anybody.
And I don't think that's what we want.
I, I don't think anything I heard you asking us to collect, them putting down an estimate of. It's, they're gonna raise five thousand dollars. That's not that hard for them to do, cause again, as, as Councilman Caro had indicated, they probably ought to have some sense of what they're do- doing.
Well, in the future would help.
And I think they do. Most of them, I think, have a pretty good sense of, it takes four hundred volunteer hours to pull off this event. It requires us to have barricades and picnic tables from the city. And we're gonna make four thousand dollars and, and they, they're weighing that that's a valuable use of their time. And since their, their incentives are tied to us, which is they don't wanna waste their time and do things that don't have a cost benefit. We tend to benefit off of their, their analysis, right? There, we tend to get drawn into things that they have a pretty good idea, it's gonna be worth their time. We don't get drawn into things where they're like, well, we don't wanna do it. We want you to do it for us. We wouldn't do this if we had to do it. Um, we mostly get drawn into events where they're already gonna do it. They think it's worth it and they just want our help.
In an effort to make sure we have enough time here, fir- first of all. Did you get enough direction out of our responses to answer or help answer one, two or three or all of those questions? Is there anything more you'd like to hear from us?
We would like to continue to hear from you. As a group is the best way to do it, so that's why we wanted to put this format together. But now we've had the public discussion and so I'd say, you've got the framework, the public knows what questions you've been asked as a council. If you wanna jot thoughts or send emails to us um, to continue, I don't think. I don't think we can leave this room tonight and be like, we got everything figured out and well, don't worry, council, we know exactly what you're thinking. But I do think we got a really good sense. I don't, I didn't hear people want wholesale significant modifications to the, to this, to the uh, what we're doing. Meaning you don't want us to just abandon any process and let it rip. And you also don't want us to start charging, you know, putting invoices out for eleven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. For whatever event people wanna do.
Everybody agree to that?
I have one question, um, just to follow up what I was talking about earlier. Um, has the city considered um, having a fee for reserve police, since we're currently paying for them for the major and regional events?
Yeah, I think we, we have, and I can only repeat the internal debate, cause you haven't, you guys haven't had that, um, the council hasn't had that debate. The city administrator and the police chief are concerned about. A significant fee schedule because we don't wanna become the private security force for every event. We think that we need to keep some, a good amount of that responsibility on the event organizers. Um, and if we go to a fee schedule, then sometimes we're treated like a vending machine. Where people just say, well, I want six of those. And so that's what, that's the caution.
No, I don't think that's, that's not the sense I got.
So I think we're, we're in good shape. It was worthwhile to staff. And if, and then it's up to council if you wanna do another one of these or if you're okay. I, I get the sense you guys are probably fine with us kinda ruminating on it, organizing stuff and then bringing back some drafts for you to, to look at.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
Bring back a draft?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring back a draft.
Sounds good.
Have anything else?
No, thank you.
Give us a couple of minutes extra here, so we will adjourn.
Thanks, before you adjourn, I just wanna thank uh, um, Community Services Director, um, Amy White. And um, Management Analyst, um, Jason Roloff for doing the majority, if not all, of this work and letting me. Letting me present it, so thank you to them.
All right, we stand adjourned for the workshop, so we'll be back here at six fifteen for border review. Be there or be square.
You might miss it.